Next item, please. You're muted, Trustee Moser.
Yep, okay. Can you hear me now? Good?
Yes.
Recognition and acknowledgements, commendations.
So, we're gonna have, David will come in for that.
Alrighty, good evening, everybody. Welcome, happy new year to all. And congratulations to our, and welcome to our new board members. Starting off with our commendations tonight, we just have a couple here. Our first one's from the high school. Commendations to three Dearborn Public School students who recently won a TikTok contest hosted by the city of Dearborn. The contest solicited TikTok videos encouraging Dearborn residents to mask up and follow all their safety precautions to slow the spread of COVID-19. Winners included Marley Beck of Smith Middle School, Yana Daher from Bryant, and Luke Hetrick from Epsom Ford High School. Each winner received a $100 Amazon gift card, but more importantly, each winner contributed to the campaign to help slow the spread of COVID-19 in our community. At the elementary level, commendations to Oakman Elementary Principal, Mr. Mahmoud Abu-Russe for his outreach to his students. In December, Mr. Abu-Russe hand-delivered certificates and board games to homes of 85 students who won awards throughout the school year. And obviously, they couldn't be there in person, so he delivered them himself. Later, Principal Abu-Russe dressed as Santa and with Oakman teachers, visited students outside their homes and delivered cupcakes to share with some holiday cheer as well. Trying to make that all-important connection with students. We know that's been part of the real downfall of this entire experience. Our teachers are doing a great job of connecting with their students over the internet. But we want to give commendations to Mr. Abu-Russe and his staff for going above and beyond and assisting in making those actual safe, personal connections. Those are our commendations for this evening.
Thank you. We have item B, gavel presentation.
Dr. Maliko, you're still muted.
Thank you. So, I want to take this time, to this opportunity, to thank Trustee Barry, President Barry last year for the great work he's done. I know it really has been a tough year with this pandemic, but we've done some great things working together. I do want to mention one, one story and one situation to kind of articulate the great leadership that he's exhibited and the appreciation that, you know, I have and my team has. I think we all remember that March day, that week, getting the call. And President Barry, I'm on the phone all Wednesday, and it was extremely busy and crazy when we found out that we had one of the first positive test cases, test case in the state. And he was there, you know, for me, working together, working in partnership, stepped up and came right to the building. We had discussions, we were on the phone. We had a, we actually went out to Whitmore Bowls, met with staff and parents to kind of calm them with the situation, to let them know that we had things under control. Now, the reality is, is we really didn't have the same kind of knowledge that we have now about COVID-19. This was all new to all of us. We didn't know about masks and other things. And he was there, you know, for me, for our team, for our students. And I truly appreciated it. Also, you know, we had that press conference, and now we're on the news. And he stood up there and said, "Look, we're gonna get through this, we're gonna work together. I have confidence in the administration and our team, and we know this is the time that we need to get through." That, you know, that story to me was very important, but I will tell you, it never stopped. It never stopped, and it continued week after week, day after day, month after month, as we spent many, many hours on the phone together, working together. And I know it's the entire board working together, but the board president represents the board at the time, you know, together, working, or the communication. And so, the entire board stepped up, the entire board was at that meeting. But under his leadership, you know, I think we've done some great things. We've worked together in a positive manner. I'm just gonna mention a few things. 95,000 meals per week distributing under this pandemic. Fully online conversion within, you know, weeks, which would normally take a month. Chromebook distribution. We have our continuation of learning plan. And then the, excuse me. And then, most importantly, really maintaining health and safety. So, again, it's the full board, but obviously, those that have been board presidents, and I know Jim's already getting a glimpse of it, because I'm calling him all the time already. It is an extra commitment, because you do represent the board. And it's somebody that the superintendent needs to talk to about things and get some direction. Also, on a practical side, we went through one of the toughest budget situations potential. We have a balanced budget. We had the highest level of clean audit, and we were able to balance that budget, make some tough staffing decisions, and pretty much avoid layoffs. I mean, it was amazing, given what we were, you know, dealing with. I also want to mention, you know, the board meetings. We've had record-length board meetings because of the pandemic. And we understand why, because these are very important situations. And so, he really did a great job. Obviously, you were all there overseeing the, the meetings and working with me, whether we were virtually like we are now, or sometimes we were a combination. I also liked the transition plan that was implemented with incoming, now current President Thorpe. There was a transition plan where it was continuation of learning and sharing of the knowledge. And so, want to mention that. And I look forward to working with President Thorpe. So, you know, Trustee Barry, I wish I could be there in person. I hope you could show your gavel. Normally would be there like I was la- last year with, with Mary, Trustee Petlicov, to take that picture, but I can't take that picture. But I truly appreciate it. This has been the toughest year in my career, really it has. I think for all of us, we could say that, but it's the truth. You know, none of us expected this. And, you know, so President Barry was there for me, working together, showing collaboration. I truly do believe we've done great things. And, and we understand that we still have work to do. But he's allowed us to get, in passing the baton, and I appreciate how you did in the last meeting, how you passed it over to President Thorpe. But I just want to sincerely say that it's been trying on all of us. And, you know, we have a, I have a huge responsibility. Take that very serious with 21,000 students and, you know, 2,700 employees. And it's, it's just very important to have the support of the board, the president and the board. And so, you've done that for me all year, and I truly appreciate it. And again, I wish I could be there in person for that picture. But if you could hold it up, I think we're gonna have David take a screen picture.
Jim, this one is mine now. I'll grab for it. Glenn, thank you very much for those kind words. It goes without saying, we have a great team. I had a great supporting team on my end, and so did you. I think communication early on was key. I picked up the phone and talked to Jim, Mary Petlicov, Roxanne, Adel. Everybody was great. I think all I did was just trying to figure out where everybody was at, and I was communicating their thoughts to you.
Trustee Barry, we just lost your audio. I don't believe he has audio or...
Everything that they did, nurses, your administration, the cooperation of the teachers was just phenomenal, all of our staff. I think you are right, we did some good work, and it was we, it wasn't just, you know, just one or two people, it was all of us. It took a team, and I truly, truly believe that, and I did, I did, I did put a post out there, speaking of Dr. Mia Polacko, God bless his soul. The last time I spoke to him was a phone conversation, and he pretty much told me that you and your team and your administration of Dearborn Public Schools are making some tough decisions. And there's no, he, this was his exact words, that there was no doubt in his mind that a couple years down the road, that we were gonna be happy with the decisions we made. We did save lives. The nurses led the way, or the decisions they helped us with did save lives, there's no doubt in my mind. So, thank you for the kind words again, and yes, thank you for the gavel, and thank you for all the little goodies, I'm looking at them right now, so I appreciate you. Jim, you have a good team working with you this year, no doubt in my mind.
Trustee Barry, I appreciated your help over the last several months to help get me ready for this changeover. I look forward to continuing to talk with you. And I know some of the public might not have joined us for the previous meeting, the organizational meeting, where we elected the trustees to the different positions. A lot of boards will actually vote on this. What we have found for the Dearborn schools is we do more of a rotation. So, there's no special skill set that any one of us have to fulfill our roles. We do them as a committee. And while the titles might change, that our voices, what they mean, don't. We're seven individual voices, and we all have our own opinions. And I will guarantee, we won't agree on everything. And the people of the city of Dearborn and Dearborn Heights should be happy about that, because there's always more than one opinion on things. But we will always work out our differences and do so in a civil mean, civil manner. So, I look forward to what the next 12 months has to bring to us.
Thank you.
Dr. Maliko, would you want to move right into the next item?
Yes.
Next item, yeah, board appreciation.
So, as I was mentioning, you know, earlier, appreciating all the board. Each January, we take time at this meeting to acknowledge School Board Appreciation Month. I usually, you know, this is now my sixth time as superintendent, share a few facts about the responsibilities of our board to both the schools and the college. I mentioned their length of service and expressed my gratitude to be able to work with such a dedicated team of professionals. This is still all true, and the words I share each year are very sincere. However, as I reflect on the past year, going back to March 2020, Board Appreciation Month means so much more this year. Living through this pandemic has taught us the importance of appreciating the people and relationships we, we have in our lives, taking the time, even if it's just a moment to express our appreciation for the relationships we have, is not only important, it is one of the positives that we can take out of this entire chaotic and unpredictable experience. In a normal year, this Board of Education must make dozens of crucial decisions that direct the education in our schools. Since last March, that task has taken on a whole new direction, elevated to a whole new level. Our board has been phenomenal in their approach to leading the district through the crisis. Many times, they had to make decisions without having the luxury of time, but they still made sure they were well-informed before reaching any final decision. They made these very difficult decisions to maintain the safety and health of our community while knowing the decision was not going to please everyone, as we're aware. As superintendent, I so truly appreciate the support and leadership our board has provided during this tough time in this pandemic. They have been flexible, reasonable, knowledgeable, and compassionate in all of their decisions. My gratitude comes not just from me, but from also, but also on behalf of our administrative team, staff, students, and our parents. I welcome our two new board members who, who know that they too are ready to meet the challenges that still lie ahead. I appreciate their willingness to take on this commitment to serve the students in our classrooms and our greater community. I look forward to working with both of our new trustees as they share their thoughts and expertise as part of the Board of Education. Our community struggled to get people to run for school board while in Dearborn, I, excuse me, other communities. While in Dearborn, we are very fortunate to always have many high-caliber candidates for a seat on the school board. Again, on behalf of the students, parents, and staff, my most sincere thanks and appreciation to our Dearborn Public Schools and Henry Ford College Board of Trustees. Thank you for the great work you do. I look forward to working with you in the next year. I know we have some challenges and some difficulty ahead that we will, but I also know that we will persevere and we will get through it together as a team. So, I salute you all for the great work you do. Thank you so very much.
Okay, Dr. Maliko. Acknowledgement of donations.
Hello, that would be me again. We have just a couple donations here. The first one is a donation of $416 has been offered to Cotter School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for counting bears and manipulative cubes. A donation of $7,500 has been offered to Dearborn, Epsom Ford, and Fortson High Schools by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for program evaluation for athletics and football. And a donation of $1,500 worth of PPE cleaning and disinfecting supplies has been offered to McDonald Elementary School by Access 21st Century Program to be used by the teachers in their classrooms. Want to thank everybody who takes their time to make that donation to the Education Foundation, who makes the donation to the Dearborn Public Schools. It is much appreciated. We all know that we cannot do it alone. It is our partnerships that help us, and these donations are truly, truly appreciated by all of us here in the district. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Approval of minutes, approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Executive session. Executive session, closed property negotiations on December 7th, 2020. Board Report 20-47. Also, the minutes of the regular Peter 12 meeting, December 7th, 2020. Board Report 2048. Make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Trustee Barry, supported by Trustee McDonald, to accept the minutes. Are there any corrections? All right, hearing none, we will leave. We'll call vote, Trustee Moser.
Sure. Mr. Hussein Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Roxanne McDonald?
Yes.
Adam Moser, yes. Ms. Mary Petlicov?
Yes.
Ms. Irene Watts?
Yes.
President Thorpe?
Yes, motion carries. Next item.
Okay, citizen part, I'm sorry, agenda item five. Special reports, potential bond. Dr. Glenn Maliko.
We're gonna have Mr. Tom Wall will be joining us for this presentation.
Trustees, if you want to hold questions until we're done with this presentation, and then raise your hands, and then I will be able to call on everyone that way.
Mr. Wall has not been able to access the meeting, and we'll check and see on his status.
President Thorpe, do you want to move to the next item, and then we come back to special reports?
Let's wait for a moment or two in case we're...
Sure.
Going, thank you. Dr. Maliko, is there any introduction you'd like to do at this time for the report?
Sure, I can just kind of mention that basically the timeline, we discussed it back in November with the Finance Committee, and the decision at that time was to start looking at the possibility for a bond in the future. So, this is just an initial, you know, kind of discussion that occurred. We are meeting every week on Thursday. We have a group that has been having a Thursday meeting, and so, we're exploring options. I will say this, the board may recall that I mentioned March, and March is gonna stick in our head for quite a while because of the pandemic. But March board meeting, which was the week before we, schools were closed, was the board meeting where our consultant was also approved by the board to move forward. So, that's Basset Ambassador, and we are working with them currently. And so, at the time, we would have been moving forward with them, but we put everything on hold because of the pandemic, obviously, it was the right thing to do. And so, right now, we want to look at the situation to determine when, and obviously, you know, looking at potential, you know, changes from the 2019 bond and how we may move forward. So, I do see Mr. Wall is in there, in right now. Is he able to? Can you hear us? I think you're muted, Tom. Oh, no, he's, so he's still having a few issues, it looks like. So, basically, we've been, already started the meetings, we've been meeting weekly, and so, we want to start. We, the nice thing is that we have a lot that was done already, a lot of the work that has been completed. And I may actually be able to just pull up the, if you give me a second too, I'm gonna pull up the PowerPoint.
I see Mr. Wall's audio has just gone live. Can you hear us?
Oh, has he? Yeah, I seem to have some feedback, so can you hear me okay?
Yes, yeah, we can hear you.
All right. All right, welcome, everybody. Welcome to the new board members. It'll be an interesting year as we keep going through this pandemic, but we'll get through it. We have an excellent team here in Dearborn. And it's one of those things that, if you remember, back in November of 19, we had a bond issue on the ballot, and it nearly was defeated. And so, back in February, March, the board approved a consultant to start working with us to kind of look at that past history and get some feedback from the community. So, the first thing, I'm gonna try to share my screen here, which I can't, so if someone could fix that while I talk then. So, the first thing, it's just kind of going back in history. The, back in May of 2017, we had an overcrowding issue at our secondary schools. And over the next year and a half, we kind of walked through that process of dealing with that, and the end result was some boundary adjustments for the secondary level. And so, when that happened, we still had the issue of our infrastructure. So, we began discussing that aspect, and we had a committee from the public put together to kind of research it and come up with recommendations to the Board of Education. So, when that happened, I can share right now, so let me bring that up. So, can you see my, can you see the presentation?
Yes, we can.
All right, so I'm a little slightly delayed, so give me a few seconds to make sure we're all cut up. So, we're just gonna go over two quick slides, just to give you the information on that, so it's not a very long presentation. But here's the history of our bond issues since 2002. Public schools are not funded in the operational aspect in our money that we receive from the state for infrastructure needs. So, we have to go outside of our normal funding for our levels to do any kind of large-scale investment. As you can see here, most of them are rather large in the sense where, because we're a large district, the third largest in Michigan. And we've done both going to the public for voter-approved bonds and doing bonds internally, which we call non-voter-approved bonds, that are actually funded by our general fund. But you can see the large ones are voted by the public, because that's the only way we can raise money for large-scale infrastructure adjustments. So, this is kind of just giving you a history that Dearborn has been involved with bond issues, and unless school funding changes, we will continue to be in the, in that aspect of asking the public to help upgrade or build new buildings for our students. So, looking at, as I mentioned, or the top-left side of the screen is talking about the infrastructure aspect, where we have gone through that process since May 2017. And as we've concluded that process, we noticed that our overcrowding isn't going to really be solved unless we do some additional infrastructure needs to the district. And our last bond issue did include some additions to some of our secondary buildings and a few elementary buildings to help with the overcrowding. Going to the far right, on the top right, is the infrastructure need. So, the committee that was developed upon the board recommendation to adopt a plan, and it dealt with mainly four issues, and I don't need to re-go through all that, but that was something we did. Then, November of 19, as you can see in the bottom-left side, that there was 13,190 votes cast in November of 19, 64, 74 for yes, and 67, 16 for no. And so, therefore, that bond process didn't move forward as the voters did not approve that current bond program. So, coming in February, March, as I mentioned earlier, we did have a consultant come in, and we were starting to work with that consultant and talking about it. But as you're well aware, in March, we had the pandemic hit, and the world got turned upside down for education, and everything was kind of put on hold, because it wasn't the appropriate time to kind of handle that kind of a situation. So, coming back in December or November, we talked about it at the Finance Committee. And in December, the board said, "All right, let's kind of move forward, looking at it again." So, we got involved with consultant, and going to the bottom-right-hand side now, that we're gonna do a community poll. I think you'll hear a little bit more of that, of that at the retreat on the 24th. And we also have a long-term plan being developed. You know, it's kind of roughed out, and in February, we'll actually talk about that further with the Finance Committee, we're kind of looking at, at a long-term plan to deal with our infrastructure needs. And the good point is with the, you know, one of the good points from the pandemic is the actual financial market is very low for financing. So, actually, the money we would have best had in November of 19, waiting a year, that was a benefit of actually having the financial market more beneficial to an infrastructure borrowing if we go out for another bond issue. So, the whole key today is just kind of give you a quick update, let you know we're actively working on this again. And going forward at each board meeting, you'll never get another quick update of how we're progressing and eventually come to any kind of decision the board decides to make on our infrastructure needs. All right, that was the quick presentation. So, any questions or comments?
Got questions, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. Trustee Moser.
Yes. I have a question right now regarding the, the overall work of the consulting company. Will that be previewed to us prior to them? So, I, I do understand that they're gonna do community polling when we approve this, the contract. There was agreements of doing listening tours with the board as well. Is that gonna also happen?
Yeah, right now, we are just now developing. We've spent a lot of time just making sure they understand our issues and where the district is at. They're actually well-aware of some of their key investors, our key consultants are actually members of the Dearborn community. So, they'll have a good feeling of what we've been going through. So, we're now just developing the questions, and I believe the board will have a chance to look at them before it goes out. We're looking at probably mid, you know, early to mid-February for that kind of a poll in the community.
Any additional questions? Mr. Wall, thank you for the presentation. This is always gonna be a very important topic. Even though our kids have not been in the buildings for the last year, it doesn't mean the needs of the buildings haven't gone away. So, we're still gonna need to do some things at the different buildings, and we'll definitely need to get feedback from all community members. Thank you. All right, Trustee Moser, next action item, please.
Next item is citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action can complete a virtual blue card that will be posted at 4:00 PM on Monday, January 11, 2021 on the district's website at dearbornschools.org/district/board-of-education. Forms received by the start of the citizen participation will be read by the board secretary. The board might not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The board president reserves the right to limit times. I believe I have all comments that I received regarding agenda item 14. agenda item fourteen, which is the continuity plan for the district. So the first one from Leila Bazey of Dearborn. She said, this is ridiculous. The children need to go back to school. My kids are not doing well at all. They're failing. The children are not at risk. Other districts went back and took extra precautions and did fine. The virus is not going anywhere. We need to get back to reality. Our children's education is important, and they need to be learning in person. Mrs. Lisa Mukaled. Not mention the city. I will not be comfortable sending my kids to school if you open this year. They're doing well with online classes. Ms. Fatima Harb of Dearborn, she said, hello, my name is Fatima. I have two children that attend Dearborn Public Schools. This year has been very challenging on all of us. Particularly, my son who is receiving special education and is on the spectrum. I have watched my son regress due to the lack of socialization. Many of the in person services interrupted. I'm asking you to please, please reconsider your plan and open the schools. I know it can be done safely. I'm a registered nurse and worked on the front lines on this pandemic. I swapped. I swapped positive COVID for patients for the last year and did not once had COVID diagnosis. With proper P P E, face shields and masks, teachers can do their jobs safely. I know many parents can agree with me that online learning is not working for students. Some students need face to face interaction in order to succeed. So please open the schools so that our kids can go back to the education they deserve. Thank you for all that you do. Take care. Ms. Juju Zaban, again, no city. I do not believe schools should be open. Ms. Aya Zaban, schools should not be opening anytime soon. We do have Elizabeth as well, no city. Two point thirteen million children have tested positive for COVID nineteen. Hospitalization and death is uncommon. As of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty, zero point zero two to three point four percent of all of the children diagnosed with COVID nineteen have resulted in hospitalization. Mortality rate for children zero to eighteen is zero to zero point zero eight percent. When this, when will we open the classroom full time for students? Why is there no plan in place? The children attending private schools are flourishing while public school children are left at home alone. If you open the schools only two days a week, children will can still be exposed to COVID. Academy of American Pediatrics recommends children to be in face to face as this where they can learn best. We have concerned parent. No city for those who are pushing for schools to reopen on social media. And otherwise, let's not allow the fact that this is inconvenient for you to trump the safety and well being of our students and staff. When the community learns to slow down the spread, then maybe we can rethink about opening. While we are too careless and too selfish to do so. Seemingly, those who view who who are pushing for schools to reopen are the ones spreading virus. Mrs. Stoffir Nehmer of Dearborn, I do not believe it's safe for schools to return to in person at this time. Mr. Luke Hetrick of Dearborn. He said that I believe that the board needs to send us back to school, meaning students, some form of in person school as soon as possible. Parents and families that are uncomfortable with in person learning have had plenty of opportunities to opt in into the virtual learning program. However, for many families, that is not the option. As you know, over seventy-six percent of our families here in Dearborn are considered low income families. These families rely on schools to act as childcare during the time or during the day while they work. By preventing kids from going to school, even as other districts started going back to in person learning, you are harming the most at risk families in our community. This will only get worse as worse as more workplaces start to move to onsite work. On top of that, this semester, this first semester was a disaster academically. Many of the students struggled with the keeping up with work and learning from home. If the numbers don't show it, then they do not show it because the teachers are trying to take it easy on us, the students. I also understand that there is a schedule change coming to high schools, second semester to try to help with this, but I do not believe that will be enough. Students that are capable of learning online have had the time to opt in into the V L P. But for everyone else, in person learning is becoming a necessity. I ask that you reconsider your reopening requirements to take into the account the new relaxed rules from the governor's office. Families have the right to decide what risks they're willing to take. And you should put that, you should put the decision back in their hands. Those were all the blue cards that were submitted.
Secretary Moses, I didn't want to interrupt you, but I believe you missed line item number four.
One second. Do you know that person's name?
Zainab Zaban. I can read it if you want me to. Yeah, it's Zain. Go ahead. If you have it, please.
Just give me one second, sorry.
Take your time. Make sure it was ready.
It's okay.
Trustee Moses.
Yes, I I do have it here. Item number four from Mrs. Zainab Zaban of Dearborn. She said, I do not feel that it's safe to go back to school.
Thank you. Thank you for all the community members that submitted blue cards. We heard from both sides of the table and we will continue to hear from both sides of this until a decision is made. And even after we make a decision, it will still keep going on. See an end to the the argument on either side at any point. Next item, please.
Action items. Special consideration for an action item. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below. Move the action items one through fifteen. Be approved as recommended in this agenda.
So move. Support.
We've got a motion from trustee Petkoff and support from trustee McDonald. Are there any items we have questions on that we'd like to discuss? Trustee McDonald?
Yeah, I have a question on item number six. I don't want to pull that just a question.
Okay, we're not going to pull it just a question on item six. Any
Yes.
Questions on any of our action items? All right, trustee Donald, if you want to go ahead with your question.
Sure. The question is, the renewal of the ediquity license for E twenty twenty students. Given that this year we are expecting learning loss more than usual. And there's a, they'll probably need need to be a greater credit recovery than usual as well. Is fifty licenses sufficient?
I think we actually have. I'd have to, I don't know if Troy can comment on that, but I believe we have more than fifty in the district. This is an additional, Troy. I don't know if you can come in on that.
Yes, Dr. Milak, you are you are correct. We do have more than that. And then also the way that E twenty twenty works is it's simultaneous connections. So we can service more than that number of students. We can only just have that number online at the same time. But these are additions into the licenses that we already have.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just comment too, that the edgenuity has been something we've been using for the E twenty twenty and credit recovery for a while. It's not, there was discussion with our current platforms that the board has already approved. You know, as we're using Zoom and Schoology. So it doesn't take the place of that at all. It's additional on top and it's just to supplement that. So I just wanted to make sure everyone also is aware of that.
Thank you.
Trustee Barry, I saw your hand go up.
Yes, thank you. I didn't want to pull it. This is for item number fourteen, mode of instruction. I I do plan to vote yes moving forward for the next thirty days for obvious reasons. But I want to, I'm looking forward to a good discussion at our study session. We've done a great job protecting our staff and community. We've done a good job for our students. But lately, I've been, you know, like Dr. Milak said earlier, things are starting to trend in the right direction. We're not there yet, but things are starting to right go in the right direction if if we get there. Looking forward to having a really good discussion on what's next. Because honestly, with students, I've heard from a couple of friends that are doctors. They're starting to see a lot of our own students in their clinics. And the issue is becoming right now the social and mental health of our young people, especially the teenagers. So now, like I said, we're not going to get any decisions today. But I am looking forward to a good discussion, especially if things keep going trending to the right direction. Thank you.
Anything else? Are we ready to do a roll call vote? Looks like we're going to roll call, trustee Moses.
Mr. Sam Berry.
Yes.
Miss Roxanne McDonald.
Yes.
Hado Moses, yes. Miss Mary Petchkov.
Yeah.
Miss Erin Watts.
Yes.
President Jim Thorpe.
Yes. Motion carries. And trustee Moses, if you can do a summary of the action items.
Summary of agenda items. One, approval of warrants. Two, approval of financial institutions and designations per board report twenty dash fifty. Three, approval of award to precision data products. Four, approval of award to Nearpod. Five, approval of award to Notable Inc. Six, approval of award to Injuri Inc. Seven to ten, approval of non instruction and instructional personnel items for P to twelve. Eleven, approval of personal items for Henry Ford College. Twelve, approval of financial statement. Thirteen, approval of the childcare to have D F S E as their bargaining representative per board report twenty fifty-one. Fourteen, approval of mode of instruction. Fifteen, approval of donations.
Thank you very much for that. Next item, please.
Okay. Business services. Just one second here.
We're actually skipping that.
Discussion item, we don't, yeah, why we don't have any discussion items, so. Boards of Education Business, acknowledgement of correspondence.
Did anyone receive any correspondence to listen about, trustee Moses?
Yeah, we did receive some emails from parents regarding school reopening and comments were already made regarding that. So where we we hear you, we hear the concerns. We look forward to our study retreat. Were we gonna dive into this? And to make sure that we have a safe way to return our students back to the classroom, so. And there are no other correspondence. I can go to the next item.
Before you do that, I just want to remind the board comes from correspondence. Please make sure that you are, when you respond, if you choose to respond, either forward something onto us, myself and Dr. Milak, to make sure that we are responding as a board. Feel free to respond individually. But as I stated earlier, some of these emails will be sent to all of us, we know. And multiple trustees could respond back to people. These are all just our individual opinions. It's not the board's position until we vote and look on it. Thanks. You can move on to the next item.
Board member committee and organization reports. Think we.
Now, I will, I have sent something out to the board with all the subcommittees so that we can start figuring out who's going to be on each subcommittee. I've asked for those to be turned back in a little bit over a week from now. So when we are at our organizational meeting, we'll be able to announce who will be on each of the subcommittees for twenty twenty-one. Next item.
Board member superintendent commentary.
Trustee McDonald.
Yeah, I just feel that I have to say something in view of what's happened this past week. As with many of you, this past week has been one of the darkest in my lifetime. And my emotions ran the gambit from horror to hope. Perhaps my positive nature, but because of that, I've landed on hope. So I truly believe that things will get better. It'll take time, but I do believe they'll get better. But hope alone won't fix what is broken. We have to put in the work to become a more fair, inclusive, just and united America. As individuals, we have the responsibility for vetting the information we are exposed to for accuracy. Opinions and facts are not the same thing, and we have to recognize the difference. Ignorance is not bliss. Ignorance is dangerous. We also need to use social media responsibly and not further propel inaccurate misleading information just to elicit a reaction. As parents, we have to take care of ourselves so that we can take care of our children. We have to set a positive example for those who look up to us and be the calming and reassuring force needed during times of turmoil. As neighbors, we have to genuinely care for and about each other. That starts with building relationships. Too many of us value and nurture virtual relationships, but don't have or have never bothered to take the time just to say hello to the person that lives next door to us. As citizens, we have to have dialogues with those whose opinions differ from us. We have to listen, and I mean truly listen, with open hearts in an effort to gain understanding, not to change opinions. We often talk about our rights as citizens. But we also forget we have responsibilities that go along with those rights. As human beings, we have to examine ourselves, our thoughts, our prejudices, our actions, and honestly evaluate who we are and how our actions affect others. We must be cognizant of the influence we yield to strive to be a positive force for good. A little kindness and compassion can go a really long way. So it's up to us to make the difference. And although it is always darkest before the dawn, it's up to us, and I mean all of us, to be the beacon of light that ushers in that darkness. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee McDonald. Any other commentary? Next item, please.
Request for information or future agenda items.
Hearing none. Move on to the next item.
Future meeting dates. Tuesday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Henry Ford College meeting at seven P M. Via video conference. Details determined. Check online at h f C C dot E D U slash board dash meeting dash schedule. Saturday, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. P to twelve, Board of Education Retreat, ten A M. Virtually via Zoom. Virtually available for viewing via YouTube and also Facebook on the YouTube channel for Dearborn Schools, also on the Facebook page for Dearborn Public Schools and cable channel. and cable channel Comcast Dearborn Channel nineteen and WOW Channel fifteen. Monday, February eighth, twenty twenty-one. P to twelve, Board of Education Meeting, seven P M. At the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom, following the guidelines of the state law and virtually available live viewing via YouTube, the YouTube channel for the Dearborn District, as well as the Facebook page, Dearborn Public Schools and cable channel Comcast Dearborn Channel nineteen and WOW Channel fifteen. Monday, February fifteen, twenty twenty-one. Henry Ford College Meeting, seven P M. via video conference. Details to be determined. Check online at h f c c dot edu slash board dash reading dash schedule.
That is it for business before this board tonight. I wish everyone a safe and happy day until we see each other again. At this time, this meeting is adjourned.
Good night.
Everyone, bye.
Great.